The Finance Committee meeting, the September 17th, 2019 Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would make a motion for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $241,166.51. Eland credit card in the amount of $14,498.98. Manual checks in the amount of $60.24. Payroll and liabilities for 8/30 of 2019 in the amount of $357,898.90. For a total of $613,624.63.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these?
I really didn't have anything tonight.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 I vote aye. Motion passes. Any other business?
No, Your Honor, I have none.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. And we'll adjourn at 6:46?
I now call the September 17th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7 PM. Councilwoman Schatz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we're thankful for the many blessings that are ours. We're thankful for this opportunity to live in this great land of freedom. We recognize the opportunity that it gives us. We ask you to be with us this evening that we might diligently strive to do the very best we can for the citizens of Riverton, that we might continue to improve the atmosphere and the desire to live in Riverton, that we might have thy Spirit to guide us in those things we ask, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would the city clerk please read roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals that wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and to identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minute, September 3rd, 2019 Regular Council Meeting, approval of the minute, September 3rd, 2019 Executive Session, approval of the minute, September 10th, 2019 Council Work Session, approval of the minute, September 17th, 2019 Finance Committee Meeting, approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for September 17th, 2019, and approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of August, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The recommendation from the Finance Committee is for bills to be paid in the amount of $241,166.51. Elon credit card in the amount of $14,498.98. A manual check in the amount of $60.24. Payroll liabilities for August 30th, 2019 in the amount of $357,898.90. For a total of $613,624.63.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Force One Cent Project Recommendations award for South Eighth Street East. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The project coming before you was an alternate project that was selected by the Fix Our Road Citizen Committee early in this construction season. On August 12th, in light of the positive condition of the fund, the Force Committee asked staff to prepare bid documents and advertise the South Eighth Street project. This project will include basically a pulverization of the existing roadway and then pavement of new asphalt, all the way to where the sale barn property is. The bids were advertised pursuant to state statute and city code, and bids were opened on September 11th, 2019 with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Company in the amount of $70,769 and 71 Construction in the amount of $80,220. Staff reviewed each of these bids to ensure that they were responsive to our bid specifications, and they were both responsive. Therefore, staff recommends that the bid be awarded to Dave's Asphalt Company in the amount of $70,769. The contractor is aware that there is a very tight window to construct this project, and that has to do with the sale barn. They already have operations going, but beginning October 7th, they'll go to two-a-week operations, and since there is no alternate access to the sale barn, that project needs to be done in two weeks. Both contractors felt that that was something they could do and reasonably accommodate without any issue. The 1% Fund has budget funds available for this project, and staff therefore again recommends that the city council award the project to Dave's Asphalt Company. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to award South Eighth Street East project to Dave's Asphalt in the amount of $70,769.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Borders and a second from Councilman Rota. Any further discussion? Kyle, what was the estimate, engineer's estimate, on that project?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. The engineer's estimate, off of memory, was about $130,000, I believe. I could find that for you. This came in significantly under our estimate, and again, we were diligent to ensure that the contractor didn't miss anything, and they were responsive to all of our bid specs.
Good job. Appreciate you getting those bids out. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Discussion and consideration for the water feature in City Park. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the September 3rd, 2019 Regular Council Meeting, council heard from community members that were seeking consideration for the placement of a water feature or a fountain at the junction of Main Street and Federal Boulevard. At that time, it was motioned to place the item on this agenda for formal discussion and potential consideration, and as such, it has been advertised accordingly and through our normal process. The proposed project began in approximately 2004. We understand that a discussion has since happened with that at different levels, but it has not come back formally to council at this point. From the previous, for the previous discussions and recent meetings, it is the understanding of staff that those seeking to revive the fountain project are proposing to raise monies for the capital construction. Different discussions have been had about the operations of it, who would pay for that. It was our understanding as staff from the last meeting that the expectation would be that, once constructed, that the city would ultimately operate it. One of the things that is very common in any such consideration between a group working to raise money on, essentially on behalf of the city or in conjunction with the city, is a set of specifications for what is being raised money for, what the impact of that is, and ultimately, an agreement that deals with how it is constructed, how it is bid, and how it is maintained long-term. At this point, we have not received any of those items, even though they've been briefly discussed. They have never been formally requested of the group, to be clear, but we have not received those at all. It is the recommendation of staff that, council will have, of course, a discussion, but ultimately, we would like to see a, some more formal items before formal consideration. And just to kind of talk about what those are, plans, at least preliminary plans and estimates for construction, estimates for maintenance costs, because the proposed item would actually have utilities associated with it, water, electric. Upkeep is going to be one of those things that is important to consider anytime we look at it. In the other projects that we've done in this community, that's been part of the conversation, even with the splash pad, that's, these items have come about. Additionally, the recommendation is to have at least a preliminary draft, at the very minimum of preliminary draft, of how that gets constructed and how it gets paid. Why do we do that? That's so we know how money is spent, how the bills are paid, who's responsible for it, the transparency of the process, who's accounting for the money. Some of these questions have been discussed briefly. However, we would like to see those, or we recommend that we would see those items prior to formal consideration by council or any formal approval that you would have. Now, that is a lot of items crammed into a very short synopsis of a memo. However, if council wishes to proceed, they can direct us as they see fit, but we do recommend that those things are requested prior to formal consideration.
Thank you. We have people in the audience that may want to speak to this subject, and I don't have a, I don't have in my script to move into an open hearing. Do we want to do, do we want to have an?
Your Honor, I believe, because it's not a, we don't have a formal item listed, and we don't have a public hearing that we've advertised, I don't think, I don't believe it would be inappropriate to allow individuals to speak on behalf of something, as it's a discussion.
So we have the, we can give them the opportunity to speak.
Yes, Your Honor.
Anyone interested in talking to us about the water feature in City Park, we'd like to hear your comments right now. We could. Thank you. If you would come forward and state your name for those people at home.
Those people at home? I'm Blaine Stafford. For those of you who don't know, my husband and I own a business located at 611 East Main Street. It's readily accessible to City Park, and if you sit in the right spot, you can certainly enjoy the most amazing view. Since the splash pad has started, you can hear laughter up the street. You can hear kids playing on Wednesdays for the farmer's market. You see movement in City Park. You see life in City Park. I have moms who call me, "You got any vision down there? Can you see a bright green shirt?" I have little guys come all the time, and they're like, "You know, when we were riding our bike today, MB," they all call me MB, "you know, I was going over this jump, and some dude literally honked at me and gave me the thumbs up." And I feel like the fountain has a great value to be somewhere in Riverton. I think we have a beautiful hospital that they're trying to build, and a fountain would be an amazing place to find comfort when you're sick, or a beautiful thing to see at CWC. But I believe if you put that fountain right where they want to put it, you are closing the door. You are putting up a curtain for things to happen that we've worked too hard to have not happen. Since Mayor Gard's taken over, I can honestly tell you that my fear factor of being at work has gone down. I see things happen in the park before RPD sees things happen in the park. I have people come to me with great, you know, scrapes and bruises. You're closing down a window, you're shutting out the whole community if you put that fountain there and allow our park to close up again. You're asking for trouble. I'm sorry. And not just from, you're not just asking for trouble from people who might want to play in the fountain or use the fountain, it's a place to hide. I mean, we hid the piano, and they destroyed the piano that came from CWC. Let's keep that park open. Let's have laughter. Let's have kids. It's a city park. You put a wall, you're saying, "What's behind there? Can we go eat lunch there? Do you pull over here?" Nobody's going to know what it is, and we're not Jackson Hole, Wyoming. We don't need a mountain at the end of Maine. It's got a great place to go, but not down there.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm her mother. I'm Alyssa Burleson, but I want to come at it from a different perspective. We have been involved in Riverton since we moved back here in 1973, and my husband grew up here. We've helped raise money for swimming pools, we've helped raise money for things that the city and other partners were going to work together on to make sure that they were able to be maintained. And sometimes it works really well, and sometimes it doesn't work at all. What I would like to see is, before this project begins, that there is a good plan in place, one that is workable, one that is reasonable, and one that the people of Riverton might be able to participate in. It is obvious, money is very, very tight. People who used to go and do, put $20 bills in, put $100 bills in. I can speak to a couple of councilmen that are up there who are very, very generous, who have put in lots of money when we've raised it. We don't have that kind of money anymore. I would love to see this water feature somewhere. I'm like Blaine. I think if we have our new hospital built, it would be a beautiful addition there. I'm not against the water feature, I just would like to see it, not at City Park, but I would like to see us have a way that we know we can pay for it and that we know we can maintain it. The pool is a great example. Many of your children, some of your grandchildren, some of you took swimming lessons from me many, many years ago. My mother-in-law helped build that pool by raising money. It can be done, but it's a long and arduous process, and that's what's got to be in place first. That's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Anyone like, anyone else like to address the council? The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd move that we would table, I guess, any formal consideration for a fountain project until we get more information as delineated by staff, particularly the, let's see, just kind of maintenance, price, other details of the proposal. Yeah, I think that's it.
Your Honor, I would second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Hancock. We have a second by Councilwoman Borders. If we table this, Tony, does it have to be brought up in the next meeting? And we set that date, or then we lay it, sell it? There's a lot of information. If Councilman Hancock gets what he would like, there's a lot of information to go over that.
Your Honor, I do not believe, and please, anybody correct me, because I've been wrong recently a couple times. And I believe you can table it until such time as delineated, that we have the information as denoted. Therefore, when it comes, we have that, it will come back, unless, of course, a new council is seated, at which point, anything on the table would die, and then it would have to be brought up again for consideration, is my understanding is that about.
Typically, when it's tabled, we try to bring it up in the next meeting, but if we set a date on it, and all you parliamentarians?
Your Honor, it may be, it may be, if we're going to set a date, which is absolutely appropriate as well, it may be worth asking those proposing when they could have those items together, and what kind of timeframe they would need.
And they would always have the opportunity to come back when they chose, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Readdress this?
Your Honor, would it be possible to just leave the burden with those that are developing it, and when they do bring it back, then we could bring it back up, but just let it drop right now?
Well, that would work. That is an option also. We do have a motion in front of us to address. If that motion didn't pass, we could just, if no other motion comes up, it would, it would die there also. We could also take a vote, and I'm sure that the people that are in favor of it would like to see how many were, are in favor and how many are opposed, so they know how hard to push on the subject. But we're at this point, we do have the motion, and we do have the second. I just wanted clarification that we didn't have to bring it up in the next regular council meeting, and I, from what I understand.
We're okay, the motion can stand until?
Thank you, Tony and Kristen. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I guess, just as clarification, just specifically, I guess, as to what we would be requesting, a set of formal plans, associated construction cost estimates, operational cost estimates. That's it. That's really what was set out in the staff report.
Your Honor, one of the other items that we denoted was at least a preliminary draft of how, the agreement on how it would be constructed and whose responsibilities. If nothing, we don't need a full document, we would want it delineated for you. Bullet points are going to be fine, we can help develop that if that comes forward.
So, let's take care of this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So, it's four to three. Do I need to get a verbal on that? I got four to three. Is that correct?
That's correct.
A public hearing for consideration of Ordinance 19-010, first reading, allowing storage containers in residential zoning. Community Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the August 20th Regular Council Meeting, staff was directed to revisit Section 17.20.030 of the Riverton Municipal Code. Before you this evening on first reading is Ordinance 19-010, amending Chapter 17.20, accessory uses. The Riverton Municipal Code does not address the use of shipping containers within residential zoning past providing a definition of what they are. Based on discussion at the August 20th Regular Council Meeting and discussions surrounding Ordinance 19-001 in January of this year, the ordinance before you contains allowances and conditions for shipping containers to be utilized within residential and commercial office zoning districts. Those conditions include prohibiting storage of combustible liquids and gases within the containers, establishing setbacks of 50 feet from the front lot line and 10 feet from the side and rear lot lines, prohibiting placement of shipping containers within the public right-of-way and within easements, and accepting shipping containers planned for use as portable moving containers placed on private, excuse me, private property for no more than 30 days in any 12-month period. At this time, staff is recommending approval on first reading of Ordinance 19-010, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number 19-010 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 19-010 on first reading, and ordinance amending, excuse me, and ordinance amending Title 17, zoning to revise Chapter 17.20, accessory uses, Section 17.20.030, accessory building and use of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. You were waiting for me to forget you, weren't you? Appreciate it. The chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilman Hancock. Is there none?
Not to open the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I forgot where I was at. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion, motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, with other applicable laws, and... with other applicable laws, and I would ask the individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
My name is Lance Godey. I'm a resident of Ward 2. First and foremost, I just want to say I'm opposed to having shipping containers in a residential zoned area. I've shared earlier today with my two ward representatives and the mayor, but I'll just kind of go back through this for the whole council and for the community's interest, I guess. So my reasoning is, is that shipping containers, in my opinion, regardless of their location on a piece of property, give a commercial or industrial look to an area. I believe that residential zoned areas are meant to look presentable, livable, and pleasant. They are our most densely populated areas, and they are our homes and likely our largest investment that we will undertake. Consequently, I believe, and it's been previously stated in council, that the presence of shipping containers is likely to lead to a devaluation of property around a lot that has them, because financial institution's opinion about them would affect the loaning opportunities. Even if allowed, their safety and construction cannot be adequately insured, as I don't believe you can write an ordinance with enough specificity to account for ventilation, lockability, or location on a property, which then adds to more enforcement issues. Ultimately, I would ask you as the council, what problem is having shipping containers being allowed in a residential zoned area solving? What are we trying to solve by having them present? I think that's the key for me, and the key that I would challenge all of us to think about. Is it storage on property? Is that its ultimate purpose? And if so, isn't the existing zoning already allow for storage on existing properties? So, we've already solved that problem with the existing zoning. Adding storage containers or shipping containers really doesn't solve a problem, it already exists. Statements have been made in the past about the condition of existing storage sheds already on properties that do fall within the zoning allowances, that they are falling down, they're in poor condition, which is relevant to can you make a shipping container look nice? And I guess if, again, that's the problem, then address that problem. Not add to the problem by putting more things in a residential area that add to the visibility and the perception of that residential area. If it's possibly the school district issue, and that I know there was an issue of having to require the school district to move some of their shipping containers, then I would make an argument that solve that issue. Address only that problem and not make a sweeping change to the entire community by trying to solve that small little problem. I think that would be a better use of your time. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Lance. Anyone else? There being none others? Oh, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kurt Gallitz, and I'm an associate broker up at Home Source Realty. I don't want to, I guess, repeat what Mr. Godey had said, but we did have a discussion about this at our weekly MLS Realtor meeting, where all the agencies do come together, and I don't want to speak on behalf of every Realtor here in Fremont County. But it was kind of our consensus as well, that we do feel that shipping containers, if not handled properly, could have a negative impact on home values in our community. Also could present some safety issues, depending on where they're located on a property, whether it has to do with visibility, confinement of streets, that kind of thing. If it is the council, if you guys do decide that moving forward with them, our one request would be to treat them more like an existing storage shed, where they are in the back of the property, they're not in the front, where that's limiting views of the home, not limiting visibility on the streets, and make sure that it still is, conforms with any existing covenants that are in there, so covenants would allow them. And that's all I had to add.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll wait for a second beat. Anybody want to join? Seeing no others, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Schotza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-010 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Schotza and a second from Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? Councilman Bailey.
Okay. I guess, a couple of things I was curious about. So, item C, item A says, "Storage of combustible liquids or gases within," so it does not allow you to store combustible liquids or gases within shipping containers. And I guess, my question is, do we really mean flammable, or do we mean combustible? Because combustible is a lot lower standard than flammable, if lower is the right word. I know, and are we limiting it only to liquids and gases? I mean, could you have explosives or not liquids and gases? So, I mean, I didn't know if we wanted to broaden that a little bit by just saying flammable items, maybe? You know, and again, paper is flammable. You know, so I don't know how you define that properly. I think I know what, we don't want people storing propane tanks and cans of gas that are extremely flammable. But I guess, to me, that might be problematic. So, you know, you can have C4 in there, but not a can of gas. And then, I think, addressing one of the comments that we had, we are saying that we're going to have the shipping containers no less than 50 feet from the front of the property, so that sets them back normally behind the house. And I guess, to me, B and C sort of, so it says 10 feet from the side and back property lines, and it says, "Container should not be within an easement," which, again, usually there's already an easement on the side property lines, so that's a little bit redundant, in my opinion. So I think the 50-foot setback's a great idea. And then I think C takes care of the side yard easements, so. That would be my comments on what we've proposed.
Councilman Larson.
Your Honor, in thinking about this, Councilman, our previous Councilman Godey, I think, hit the nail on the head when we say, "Let's solve the problem of shipping containers that are used on the school district." And I realize the school district is located in a neighborhood covered by homes, family homes. That's the way it is. Why can't we specifically say, "Except in school districts where added storage is needed?" If you think about it, this 50 feet, the only place these are going to be used are on your property up on West Bend, where people have depth in their property. Most properties are less than 105 feet deep. The house is in the center of, located there is somewhere between eight and 12 feet on each side of the house. So you can't put them there. So they've got to go in the backyard. And if you get them in the backyard after you've built the house, you're going to borrow a crane to get them there. Next thing, because they are so heavy, you're going to need a foundation, because pretty quick, they sink into the ground because you've loaded them up with your stuff. Okay? Then you can't open up the door. So, all of the wood sheds that are now being brought locally by Skid Shed have big pontoons on the sides, because they are loaded up. But they float because of the wider level on them. So something, if this passes, then we need footings. And that's about, that's going to be $200 or $300 to $500 bill. And you can't buy these for less than $3,000 apiece. So, I mean, I realize we're working on this, but it's a no-brainer. Let's fix the problem at the schools. Let's allow the schools. Aspen School, it wouldn't hurt them to have them there, they're not in the public eye. And certainly, I'm not going to be buying Aspen School, but I am going to be buying a house, and I don't like these in residential areas other than schools.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Again, and I don't, I guess I don't agree with the dangerous part of these containers. But if we're going to use the argument that they shouldn't have flammable liquids in them because of all the danger and explosive, and the doors come off and kill people, and all of this, are we really wanting to put those in a school area where we have hundreds of small children? You know, so I, there's this point where we could come up with an argument against almost anything. If you what-if, you know? You drive your car, you could get in a wreck and get killed. But we still all have to use our cars. And I guess, to me, I tend to lean toward the ability for people to use their property as they like, and I understand that some people think they're ugly. I think some of the storage sheds I've seen are ugly too, but that's not my choice. That's the people that own them, and that's their job to paint them nicer, or clean them up, or whatever it is. So I guess, I think we ought to give people the ability to do what they want with their own property within certain reasons, so.
Councilman Hancock.
Your Honor, and I, I've spoken about this before. This is the same things we've talked about already. I, I think they really, if we're hearing from people who are actually involved in the buying and selling of property, and they're saying they look down on them, so to speak, they don't think they're a good idea, I think that's one thing we need to listen to. There's a right to buy and sell property and use your property how you want. Of course, that's there. But this is a zoning restriction, same as any other zoning restrictions that we have, if we were to say you can't have shipping containers in residential areas. And I think it's a lot easier, rather than saying, okay, let's, you know, make exceptions and that kind of thing, just to say, okay, you can't have shipping containers in residential areas except for school-owned property. And then if they do have them, they can't have combustible liquids in it. I mean, that'd be easy enough. That solves the problem that we're talking about, which was trying to figure out a solution for schools. And it also, I think, prevents them from being in residential areas, which, now, we talked about this a little bit, the idea of covenants. And I've been thinking about this, because we talk a lot about restrictive covenants and law and everything. And if you were to say, "We want to have a covenant in this property for this" and not allow these, you have to basically have, you have to fulfill all these requirements. The only way I think you could do it is if every single person in the subdivision said, "We want to have this as a covenant." And even if you did that, I think there's still a question, because there's requirements of horizontal privy and vertical privy, I'm not going to get into all of it. But there's this idea of really what covenants are, is they're when somebody who has the property sells them to someone else, they say it's sold with these conditions, and everybody understands the conditions, there's people that benefit from them, there's people that are burdened by the conditions. So it's not as easy as just saying, "Get together with your neighbor and create covenants." Because really, a covenant is only going to be useful if every single person agreed. If you had 98% of the people in the area that said, "We're not going to have shipping containers," you just take one person who says, "I want it, and I'm going to have one," to make it so that you're, it's done. You've now got it. And I think there's a right, not just of what to do with your property, but there's a right to be able to say, "When I buy and sell property in a residential area, then there's an expectation of what it's going to look like." And shipping containers just don't fit that. And of course, we talked a little bit about, this does address, I think, some of the safety concerns we had discussed last time, and I think that's one of the things that it's meant to do. But I just think when you consider the fact that, I think it can discourage people from buying and selling property that doesn't have these covenants, it's going to make it so that it's more difficult to do it. As I understand it, as it was before we considered this, were they being allowed? If somebody came to you and said, "I want to have a shipping container in my backyard," were we allowing that to happen in residential areas?
Your Honor.
Yes.
The way our zoning regulations are written, we say what is allowed, and because there was no verbiage to allow them, then no, they were not allowed.
So as it was, before we started talking about this, we already, just in practice, had not been allowing them. So, this would be basically going against what we've been doing. We had Mr. Skaggs come and talk, and he said he had never had any, that he had sold or rent-loaned or anything in residential areas. There hadn't been a demand for it, really, I guess. So he hadn't done it. He's the only one that I recall, when we talked about this before, that spoke in favor of him. As I recall, everybody else, when we talked about this months ago, was against it. I think maybe there was one more who was in favor of it, when we had the public involved. But it's my recollection that, for the most part, the people that were coming and talking about it didn't like it. And so, I just think, I don't support this ordinance as it's written. I would support it if we just said, "You can't have them except for at the school, and if you're making it so that you can't store combustible liquids or gases." So anyway, that's long explanation, but that's just all of my thoughts about the subject, I suppose.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
From what I heard from Kurt, he didn't say that they're against it. They said they were against them being in visible sight. And this, from what I'm reading, would not put that in visible sight in any, if very, maybe very few, properties. And then, secondly, when this came out in the beginning, was it not because somebody actually requested to put one on their lot? Eric?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Yes.
So there was somebody that was for it.
One.
Thank you. Your Honor. Councilman Bailey.
And I guess, if the city in the past was not letting them be there, you can't use the fact that nobody was having them as an argument against letting them be allowed. You know, it'd be, you know.
I'll chip in. I have some experience with property values, and Councilman Bailey's totally correct. If you don't have any in the area, how can you make the statement that they're value killers? The other thing that I can state too, and I've gone and seen them, these are designed to pick up and move, which wood sheds are not. You can pick these up with their content and move them. So the new homebiter, who moves in and buys and doesn't like one, can have that lifted out of his backyard and taken away. I went down and looked at these, they have, they're wonderful facilities. They're rubber-floored and painted walls, and extremely costly. They're three times the cost of a wooden shed, or the same amount of square footage as you get. So I think, once again, we're at that point of an argument that doesn't make a lot of sense, because value is going to be where people want to put their storage. They're going to buy the $1,200 shed. It comes back to a more libertarian attitude for me, as it's your property, and I would like you to have the opportunity to do what you would like to do with it. There are covenants in subdivisions in Riverton, Wyoming. I've lived in those subdivisions. Out at the golf course, you cannot have windows in your garage doors, because they don't want to see the storage that you've decided to put in your garage instead of your Ferrari. If everyone had a Ferrari, they wouldn't mind. If everyone had a Ferrari, they wouldn't mind windows in their garages. So there are places that you can move to if you choose not to have one. When it comes to setbacks, everybody's right about that. It's a fifty-foot setback from the front yard of a twenty-foot unit added on to that has a hard time fitting in the backyard. It also has a, a problem ten feet from the property lines. It can be turned sideways and work. And so we just have, I just have a hard time setting precedence on the fact that someone thinks they're ugly. And ugly is a relative term. You know, I was younger once and had hair and all sorts of stuff, and I, I hate for people to think that I'm ugly today because I've aged. But the reality of it is, this is an acceptable practice in Casper, Wyoming. Casper, Wyoming has accepted these, correct? Eric, am I correct about that?
Your Honor, that's correct, with stipulations.
And so they do have some stipulations, just like we do. And they do not need foundations underneath them. They're self-supporting. Councilman Bailey can speak to that. I don't own one of these. I am a wood guy. I don't know why I'm pushing woods, steel storage buildings. I like wood stuff. But they don't sink, and their doors are twelve inches off the ground. It would be, it would be an amazing settlement problem to have it sink far enough that the doors wouldn't open. Councilwoman Schotz had told me one day that they spent her entire military career inside one of these. I don't know if that was the rig or what, but they're used quite often. These are usable structures. They're, they're very pliable, and, and they're removable and placeable. And so I know that it's, it's, I, I don't agree that there's enough data out there that you can actually say that I, my home value has lost value because my neighbor put in one of these units. No more than you can say the shed in the backyard of my neighbor is detracting also. We don't sell enough of them, and as Councilman Bailey, or, yeah, Councilman Bailey pointed out, there aren't any to have that data to show that reflection. So I would be in support. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Excuse me, Mike, did you have something?
I would like to amend line C, number B, to delete everything after the property line, which would be deleting and ten feet from the side and backyard property lines because I think item C already includes that, which is within, it cannot be on an easement.
So I'm a little bit lost. Help me again.
So that would be the amendment? I need a second on my amendment.
Okay. We need a, we have an amendment, though. Then the amendment is to, to strike C? Take C out?
No, to strike the last half of B.
Okay.
Because it's redundant to C.
Starting at and ten feet?
Yes.
Okay. So for clarification, at ten feet from the side and back property line, your amendment wants to strike.
Remove that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll vote on that. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? So we have one abstention, one nay, and five, four? Did I get that right? Thank you. So with that, amending the motion, we now have a motion in place from Councilman Schotz, and seconded by Councilman Bailey, for the acceptance of ordinance number nineteen dash zero one zero on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 So we have the same five again? All opposed?
Nay.
Two opposed. Thank you. The motion passes. Council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Let's start in the middle. We don't do that very often. Councilman Hancock, would you give us your information, please?
I don't think I have any. I attended the first part, I suppose, of our Solutions Committee meeting. I wasn't able to stick around to the end of it, but I don't think there was anything earth-shattering or anything that we talked about there, so I, I just don't think I really have a report tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Carla?
I'll have to second Councilman Hancock on the Solutions Committee. Of course, we did finance earlier tonight, and that's really about all I have to report right now.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have, I'm sorry. You made me think of something. The Senior Citizen Endowment Board, they actually have a new executive director, and we were hoping that she would come in sometime to introduce herself to the council. What was her name again, Mia?
Your Honor, her name is Deb Cunningham. She's a Riverton native, but she has lived extensively in other places of the United States, and she's back in Riverton now. So she's been in the position approximately a week, and so hopefully, you'll all get an opportunity to meet her soon.
And I, from visiting with her, it seems like they're in good hands over there. Of course, the previous director, she's sticking around, helping out a lot, trying to make sure that the transition is smooth and everything, and she supports the change. I think she's happy to be moving on to other things. So I, but we'll try to get her to come in sometime to introduce herself to the council, so.
That'd be great. I do know that the president, is Frank the president of their?
Yes.
Their association is working really hard to try to put solars on that unit, and it looks like it may, may work. It's a great idea.
Yes, and I, that's something else I should have brought up. Yeah, we had, I, I forgot that we had a Senior Citizens Endowment Board meeting, so yes, they're, they're working hard on that. And they're still, we had talked at the last meeting about how they were wanting to get their refrigeration problems figured out. They understand that we've approved that, they're working at it, but in order to be able to fulfill our requirements, they've got to have more than just the amount of bids they have. So they're trying to get other people who are willing to give them an estimate, you know, a bid as to what it would cost to replace that. But Frank is very excited about the idea of solar, and hopefully, we can get a little bit more information about that. Mia was going to try to find out a little bit more about just how we have to go about that, if it has to be something that has to be bid or exactly how it'll work. So we're still looking into it.
Councilman Hancock, is it a refrigerator room or is it, is it a freezer itself?
It's a freezer, is what it is.
It's a freezer?
Yeah. Lock-in freezer?
Your Honor, it's their cooling system that they have, and it's built in. The refrigerator and the freezer is all one wall, but the cooling system is outs, it's in another separate room. And that's the, that's the area where they are experiencing a lot of problems. The room does not stay cool enough to keep the fans and the units operating appropriately, so they're working on getting some quotes to get those repaired.
Have they contacted Craig Starks by chance?
No, I don't believe they have.
Do you know the name of his operation?
Starks Refrigeration.
I don't think they have.
Or Climat Tech is the other one that.
That's, they have gone through.
But Starks would be a good source.
We can get that information over to them.
Okay. Thank you. He is local. Carla, you want to amend anything since you sent Tim jump back in?
You didn't make me think of anything new.
Well, you did. You did well.
Cory?
Mayor, just a couple things. We will have a Kickin' Trash September 22nd at 10 o'clock on, we'll begin at the Old Maverick location, and we'll work our way down east Monroe. This is being hosted by Wells Fargo Bank, so huge shout-out to them. I think they've got six or seven employees that are going to be coming out for this. This was something that was all their idea. They just wanted me to set it up and make sure the word got out. So we'll be doing that September 22nd. Our Community Engagement Committee will meet on the 23rd of this month, next Monday. I believe we have a couple people who are going to come and speak then. And then I started the Leadership Fremont County class here last week, and we'll have another class this Thursday. It's been pretty enlightening so far. I'm pretty excited to see where it's going to go, so I just wanted to give them a little shout-out. Also, while I have everybody's attention, I wanted to make a motion as far as posting a sound ordinance sign. I know we had discussed the sound ordinance prior for Jake breaks and things of that nature, but maybe putting a sound ordinance sign when they get to town, something that says, "Sound Ordinance Enforced." I, I feel like we had a reason we didn't want to say Jake breaks because it was too specific, so I did want to maybe bring that back before the floor. So I would make a motion that we revisit that.
Do we need a second for that?
Am I doing that proper?
Your Honor, are we asking to, my understanding is you want us to put up a sign denoting the noise ordinance?
Yes, sir.
That's, okay, I understand. To revisit it, to revisit it would be to revisit the ordinance.
Okay, so, so we can just go ahead and put that sign up? Do I need to make a motion to have those signs?
No, not generally. If council is generally, if that is generally to your liking, we can make that happen. It's no problem.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Councilman Bailey?
I guess I would second Cory's motion with, so right now, what would our sound ordinance state? It puts you right on the spot.
Any, as, as our, it would denote the title of the ordinance, it would denote briefly that a sound ordinance is in place, and we would probably look for some icons that would represent that. We would try to find the best one. The trick with any sign that you have coming into a city is that when you're coming in, you're going at approximately forty-five miles an hour, and, okay, you have to be able to read it relatively quickly. So I can't spell out the entire ordinance, but I do, we do want to get the information across. We'll do our best to put something together. I think we can make it happen. I don't know exactly what it would look like at this point. If anybody has recommendations, please email them to me.
Councilman Bailey?
I guess, from what I just quickly read, I, I think the sound ordinance is fairly broad, but I think as just an overall deterrent in excessively noisy vehicles, I don't see a problem with this, and I think it's probably a, a nice middle-of-the-road way to approach it. And just sign probably will reduce the amount of people that are, at least they know we're paying attention without getting super-specific and going into all the intimate details that we talked about previously. It's probably a decent way to do this.
Councilman Larson?
Your Honor, I think instead of a sound, you should probably address an engine brake versus a Jake brake or this, because most of this is coming from the heavy-duty trucks, semis that are hauling in the city of Riverton, that are taking the concrete away. They're the ones using the engine brakes to slow down. There used to be one opposite the cemetery. I don't know when it disappeared, but there was one up there.
Said no Jake breaks?
No, it didn't say, well.
I think it did say Jake breaks.
Didn't say Jake breaks.
I remember asking my mom when I was a kid.
What's a Jake brake?
See, I thought there was one on the north end of town, and I, I did not see one at all. That's what's.
There was one up by the cemetery.
For, for clarification, as, when we looked into that, Jake breaks is like Kleenex and it's a, it's an actual trade name. And so what you see going into Lander is no engine breaks. It means, it means the same thing, but you just, you can get, the Jake brake people will send you a letter and say you can't use their name.
I mean, something like that.
Do you want to make an amendment to have a Jake brake or a, there, I guess?
Engine brake?
Engine brake?
I would, I would make that amendment.
Your Honor, I apologize. The, the challenge we have with having something that says engine brakes is that you don't have an ordinance that says engine brakes. You, it's, it doesn't exist. We can say sound. We can say noise ordinance. We can say noise ordinance, including vehicles, but it's not, you don't actually have an engine brake ordinance.
And actually, the sound ordinance that we have refers to 10,000-pound vehicles. And Kyle, do you have it? Are you looking at it?
Yes, Your Honor. It's 10,000 pounds, and then it cannot exceed a decibel of eighty-eight.
So I think to cut through the chase, the easiest thing to put on there is no engine brakes. And if we have to amend that ordinance, Tony, you're probably clerically correct, we would need that motion to amend that ordinance to refer to an engine brake, the sound ordinance. So that's back to the, Kyle, you can amend that motion if you chose and, and pick up a second, or the original motion can be amended to a, to a.
Your Honor, I would make that amendment to my motion for, to say engine breaks.
Okay. And the second, okay with that?
No.
Meaning engine.
Your Honor, I guess if we're going to go that route, then we probably need to just, the amendment, the whole motion should be pulled, and then we can instruct staff to start that conversation with us again and change the ordinance first, then make the sign match the ordinance, as opposed to saying we're going to put up a sign that doesn't match the ordinance right now. So I would withdraw my second on the original motion.
I would concur.
You withdraw. So can we direct staff to bring us back a ordinance that would refer to an engine brake?
Yes, Your Honor. You can direct us to bring back the engine brake ordinance.
Thank you. Anything else, Cory?
No, that is all, Your Honor.
The, I need some clarification. It was at 10 o'clock on the 22nd, Kickin' Trash?
Yes, sir. And that'll be Sunday at 10 o'clock, and we will meet at the Old Maverick location on Monroe and Federal.
Okay.
And we'll work our way down Monroe.
So the Old Maverick and, on South Federal and 10 o'clock in the morning on the 22nd, which is a Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Thank you. Anybody that's in town and listening, we could use more help picking up trash. We really do appreciate those guys that do that. Both Cory and Rebecca do a wonderful job of that, and we really do appreciate it.
It's fun, too.
It is fun. I've been, and it is enjoyable. Kyle, do you have anything for us?
And the Trash Masters, which is codename for Dumpover and Lander, and they were, they were worried about DUIs for their operators. And the only thing I'm, that brought it up to mind, do we have any ordinances where we are operating equipment for the city of Riverton that says, if you get a DUI, you can't be driving our scraper or any of our equipment? They said after that, if the employee provides his own liability insurance, and the attorney spoke up and said, yeah, but that's normal, normally going to be about $25,000. So I'm wondering if we have that particular thing in our manuals stating that you must have a driver's license which is enforced without any moving violations because of liability. Secondly, they were talking about purchasing of equipment, and they bought a big, huge seven, $471,000 Trash Master. And I'm wondering, where would you get so much money like that? And I'm thinking city of Riverton. But anyway, so if you would look at that, see if we have any type of restrictions on driver's license, operators, DUIs. Thank you.
Your Honor, can I just?
Yes.
This applies to Councilman Larson's, no, if, if you have a CDL, you get a DUI, your license is going to be suspended, just by virtue of state statute. There are ways that you can get that so that that suspension is lifted. The amount of time that it's suspended depends on how many DUIs you have, but just so you're aware, I mean, irregardless, with, regardless of city policy, generally speaking, you're going to have a suspension for a period of time.
Councilman Bailey?
Your Honor, I, I think Councilman Larson's talking about running equipment, so like a backhoe or a front-end loader or something like that, that we have technically, well, technically does not require a driver's license to be able to operate a backhoe.
Mm-hmm. I get what you're saying.
So, so I think that would be something to look at in our policy to see if. So I think that would be something to look at in our policy to see if the same rules apply to running equipment that due to running vehicles on the road.
Right, and if you're running equipment and it's not on a public street or highway.
Right, then you don't.
You're not restricted, you don't have to have a license anyway.
Right, but our policy could, so.
Tony, do you have anything to add there?
We do have a policy that addresses it and I can, I can prepare something a little more formal and in-depth for you that explains what, what generally require and generally what the steps are. And there are times that throughout our policies, scenarios exist that we have the ability to say, okay, well, we can't do this, but then we can do this. And we do that from time to time, depending, but we will prepare something more formal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rebecca.
Yes, Your Honor, I missed the first meeting of the month, so I didn't get to talk about anything, but I was wondering if you, did you talk about the class reunion already? You did, okay. And the holiday festival?
Holiday.
Okay. I'll bring those up again, but other than that, I haven't really attended any meetings. I just want to say that over the past couple of weeks, I've had a lot of citizens bring ideas to me that they are going to do in order, like getting events going in Riverton, not only for this winter, but for the summer. So I want to just encourage that behavior even more. You know, we're always here to help the Community Engagement Committee, so if you have an idea and you want to plan something, please come to us and let us know and we'll do everything we can to assist you in livening up our community and making things happen. So I just want to say thank you to the community for bringing those to my attention.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey.
Thank you. I did attend the Force Committee meeting last week and like we talked about today, they've done a really good job this year in getting projects underway and under, under budget. And so we did have some money left over and we were able to do the South Eighth Street bid, which again, that road was in pretty bad shape. And so I think it'll be a great improvement to see that get done this year. And we're going into the winter season with a little bit of money left over and so we are in the process of analyzing the different projects for next year so that staff can start preparing estimates and bid documents so that we can, again, get ahead of the curve a little bit. We found that if we bid those early in the season, we get very good prices because the contractors are, after a long cold winter, are hungry and willing to work cheaper. And, and so I think the Force Committee is making very good decisions based on watching our tax dollars and trying to get the most amount of projects done for the least amount of money. And so we've got some stuff on the, by the end of the year, we'll be making which projects we move forward on for next year. So stay tuned. The other thing, again, I've been very impressed through the years with the amount of volunteerism that we have in our community and the amount of things get done. And we, you know, talk about Kickin' Trash and rendezvous games and, you know, all of the different things that we've done here in Riverton. And, you know, there are multiple organizations in this community that need your help if you're willing to serve. There are multiple boards that I'm on and others that are looking for additional board members. They are always looking for more help. I'm on the hospital board. We have two openings coming forward. I'm on the FCEC board, which is Fremont County Action Committee, which distributes the CSDBG grant for the state. I don't know if that acronym is correct or not, but basically there are funds that are passed down from the federal government that go to nonprofits that help low-income and disadvantaged people. And so we are looking for people to be on that board. The Good Samaritan Center is looking for more board members. I forget, I've had four or five just in the last month that, they're all looking for board members. So no matter what your aptitude and desire and interest are, there's probably a board out there waiting for you. And so I would seriously encourage people to get involved in those. They're very, you know, very good community oriented type organizations and they do a lot of good in this community. They just need more help. And so the up on the top of Main Street, the.
Eagles Hope.
Eagles Hope is the one I couldn't remember. So all of those people, you know, they just need more help to get more things done. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. City Administrator's report, please. You thought I'd miss you. I didn't.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple items. We are, I will be meeting with a group of individuals that has been working on community marketing, trying to get a better idea about some of the options that we have in place for maximizing our impact as we, and the information that we put out. It's been, the group has been relatively informal to date and we have a consultant that agreed to just talk with us for a couple of minutes, kind of give us some ideas. Here's what they're seeing and that's really appreciated. It's a local consultant and doing a lot of work in here and in Lander, so we're, we'll be meeting with them, I believe, next week. So that's, we hope to bring some good ideas. We can look around the state at what other people are doing and, and use some of those methods. And I think it's going to be very useful as we keep going. And there's been a lot of good marketing being done right now. We mentioned the holiday festival and that's another one of the items. We are working with the Holiday Festival organizer and on not only that, but also the Fall Festival, trying to help them through their permitting process. We've discussed how sometimes working through that process at the state level is, you know, it's new to most people. You don't do it a lot, but we see it a lot. So we're happy to help with that. If people are planning those items, we're happy to sit and work through that and try to get that expedited. So we, we're looking forward to that part of the process and there may be parts of that the council are going to be asked to weigh in on. And the next item is that we have a discussion with another consultant. We've been, the mayor and I attended the EIS meeting with the state and the VLM going over the different options and it was, it was, we found it to be complex and a lot of different conversations going on. We are obviously very well-suited to talk about economic development in our community. This is what we do all the time, is we have these conversations and what's best for, so there's a greater deal of knowledge here. However, a lot of that conversation is geared more around items that we're not as educated on, water quality, geochemistry, geomorphology, which I didn't know was actually a thing, but now I do. So it was suggested that maybe we, we find a consultant to talk to, that's somebody that can help guide us. And so we have only knew of one, so we're starting a conversation. They are willing to just sit and talk to us about what it would look like for them or someone else to assist in some of the technical aspects or the education. We don't know what that's going to look like, but we have that on Thursday of this week with Idea Inc. And some of that idea came out of the Idea Inc. group that said, well, what if we had this available to us? If we were to better have, if we were to better understand and to better communicate, we might be able to get our thoughts across in a, in a language and in a manner that would yield results for us. So we hope to, we hope to see what that brings to us and what that would look like, but we are making steps or taking steps. We are waiting on the next level of the report, which is when they consolidate all of the different items that were talked about at the first meeting we were at as an option four, if you will. There are usually three options. So the new option four, even the option five, and then we get back in the room and we have that discussion again. And if memory serves, that's when a lot of the real discussion comes because we've got down to that step where we can start saying, this is good or this is bad, or where does it need to move? So it's going to be good that maybe we have a little better understanding. RECDA will be on the 25th of this month at the Sundowner. It's at 7:00 a.m. I do not know who's presenting this month, but I'll figure it out. And if, just for a point of clarification, it is council's will that we bring back the, because we went through all the motions. It is your will that we bring back the engine brake ordinance as it was previously prepared, which is very short and pretty consistent with what the rest of the state does. Am I generally correct in that? Okay. Don't need a motion, just want to make sure I know what we need to bring you. Your Honor, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. We had a really good meeting with the attorney from College Hill Apartments. Tony and I and the chief were in on that. We find that the College View, the College Hill Apartments are, we either are going to have to put a sub-police station there or we're going to have to do something. And so we got with them and we've, they were kind enough to give us their lease so that we could look over that. And we have some ideas and the chief's going to help us take care of that. So that's underway. I did attend the federal meeting for Federal Boulevard. I'd just like to thank those people that are involved with that. That's a lot of hard work and I would once again ask the people to observe those no-left-hand turns, please, and participate and be courteous and kind as we go through that, that area. We're getting close to done. It's looking really good. I was also invited to do a video shoot for the city videos and we did that last year in the four-year and I thought this year would be fun to do it at City Park and Kristen helped arrange for kids to be there in the water, in the splash pad. And we had kids skating on the, on the skate pad and as I, as I came, I saw some friends that were eating lunch there and I told them, thanks for using the park. And as I left, I thought I recognized a young lady that was sitting there with a young child. She was playing between her, she was out of her stroller and I went over to talk to her, only to find out that I didn't know her, but that she'd been using the park every day that week. She was up visiting somebody that was working on, on Train Three. And, and so it's, it's a fun thought to know that our park is, is at the point where, and she was very complimentary about how fun the park was to be in and, and she enjoyed being there. So I appreciated that video shoot. They only had, I only had to do it seven times to get it right. I thought that was pretty good. The Solutions Committee was good. Lance Godey is the chair of that. Lance is here tonight. We appreciate his efforts on our behalf with the Solutions Committee. We're a little light in number, but, but that's, that's the way that goes. I would like to take just a moment, I went to the Force Committee also with Councilman Bailey. Kyle, you do a wonderful job there and we're fortunate to get the work done that we have in previous years and this year. You've come in under budget and done a really good job of overseeing those. We're about to put asphalt down on, on Bell and Village is about to put asphalt down. Have they started yet? I don't, I didn't see it yet.
Your Honor, I'm not sure on Village, but Bell was done today.
They did do Bell today. I drove by earlier. That's the fun part about asphalt. It goes down pretty quick. So it wasn't down this morning, but we're really fortunate to have all that work done. And I would like to thank the Force Committee, Councilman Bailey and yourself and the administration for the hard work that's done there. So we got a lot of construction and so far we've been able to hold it peacefully together. So the police have done a good job of that. We appreciate that, too. So we did also get to meet with Judge McGee and we talked with Judge McGee about some very important things. She pointed out that the, she thinks in talking with the jailers that the real bottleneck is that 85% of people in county are waiting to be sentenced. And so we have no municipal prisoners in county for the last three months. Our jail bill's way down. We do have county prisoners and I'm waiting for those numbers to come back to me. And Tony's going to get those for me, but that, that is a good arrangement. So we are talking about using another jail facility if we need to, and we're also talking about using ankle mount, ankle monitors if we, if we have to. Had an interesting conversation that I was called to at the Brown Sugar Roastery to sit down with a local architect, a local contractor, a local plumber, the owner of the Brown Roastery, Brown Sugar Roastery. I also had the same problem with the Rusty Truck when they moved to town. They were having problems with the, the state inspection on the building and they're extensive. And so I, I went back, I called the state number that they gave me. I called the governor, left a message for the governor. Still haven't heard back from the governor. I called Representative Larson, who got right on it. Within an hour, I had a call back from a Mrs. Cook, who is in charge of, she's a deputy to the Agricultural Secretary of the State of Wyoming, and we're hoping to get some of those things resolved. And it all deals with a wash-up sink being close enough to what they think is the right spot. So they're trying to close the roasted beans or the brown sugars roastery, so and it makes it pretty hard to sell coffee if you can't roast beans. So that was a good, good conversation. I hope it goes someplace. The other thing that I did just last night was I met with two different companies that are putting in their proposals to run Job Corps. And every five years, they put that out to other businesses. They call them small businesses and to be a small business, you have to make less than $35 million a year. Any of you guys want to throw in your applications? It was fun talking to them and it was fun to review how successful the Job Corps has been and I was pleased to have that conversation. I also had a conversation with Ditch Company today with one of their chairman and we're going to try to move that forward also. So I appreciate the help that everybody's given us. Is there any other comments needed? Seeing none, we do have need of an executive session. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into the executive session for the purpose of litigation, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may be party according to, according with the state statutes 16-4-405A.
Romanet.
Romanet.
Two.
Three. Romanet, Romanet three. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Schatz, is that you over there? Councilman Schatz and a second by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The chair would invite.
Your Honor, it'd be Kristen Watson, myself and Richard Wright out.
Richard, would you go with us? And Tony and Kristen, please. Thank you. The motion passes. We have no action items, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We learned that last week. I watched it on YouTube. Seeing no objections, we're adjourned.